Meeting to order. I will ask our county administrator Deb Shackett lead us into the pledge.
I plan to leave then to the flag.
The United States of America.
Into the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Deborah.
Awesome, Deborah.
All right, commissioners. Good to see everybody again. Thank you again for your four days last week and moving this meeting to the good end. I appreciate that. Uh, is there a discussion or motion approved minutes from the last meeting?
Motion is presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next up, we have our calendar. Any discussion?
This, uh, meeting's moved.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
On this calendar says we're meeting Monday, the fifth.
Right, but actually it's Monday, the 12th. And the 19th is really the 26th.
So it's the 12th and 26th.
Right.
Okay. All right. Very good. Uh, on to previously signed documents. Is there a motion for approval?
Can we go back to the calendar?
Oh, sorry.
And so there is a budget delegation review meeting scheduled for the 14th?
Yes.
At three o'clock?
Yeah.
Is that the full delegation or is that just the?
The Budget Review Committee.
It's just the, uh, Budget Review Committee.
Okay, okay. I see that now. Thank you.
And I believe.
I'm wearing my glasses, I guess.
We're on this Wednesday as well, Monday.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Commissioner Warren, we're also meeting with them. We've been meeting with them on Wednesdays.
Okay, perfect.
That's great. Very good. On to previously signed documents. Motion to approve.
I move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Uh, next up, we have an update from Mr. McPaddson of Restorative Justice. Michael, how are you? Good to see you.
Hi, Michael.
Hi there.
How are you guys doing tonight?
Doing well. There was a good word.
Well, great. Well, the good word is everything is progressing smoothly. Uh, we're continuing to move forward. The, uh, budget uh, presentation has been done to the executive committee. Um, that went well. And, uh, hopefully, uh, things will continue to move forward with a full delegation. Uh, but it, uh, seems like, uh, everything is, uh, online to, uh, move forward for the year in a, in a positive way. So, um, I currently have an intern working with us, uh, Eva Gano from Flum State University. She's working out very well. She's actually, um, handling, um, a small caseload already. She's only been with me for about three weeks and, uh, she's, uh, it's, it's like she's been here for, for a long time. So she's gonna work out really well. I'm really happy with that relationship with PSU and, and the interns. They, uh, they help us make things, uh, work, um, in the department. Um, and they get an opportunity to, to see the field and experience the field and kind of decide, uh, what direction they want to go in after college. So it works out well for both of us. We have seen a slight uptick in the, uh, numbers, uh, in the juvenile area as well as in the adult area of the program. Um, a lot of this has to do with kind of working out the kinks in the new transition, uh, program that the state has for juveniles. And, uh, and so we're seeing that steady uptick. We also saw an increase in community service projects over the last year. Um, some of, an example of some of the things that we've done is we, um, adopted a spot again this year with the city of Laconia Vet Square, which was weekly garden upkeep and maintenance to keep the memorial gardens in good shape and, and looking good. Um, it's an area that homeless community frequents. So it was, uh, it was a weekly task to, to keep things, the trash and things, uh, picked up and, uh, drug paraphernalia uh, out of there. I, and keep it looking good for the, for the vets, um, that have served in, in the foreign wars. Um, we also assisted with Laconia Library and their garden areas. Again, that's another area that's frequented by the homeless. So that was a, a regular task. And we helped with Celebrate Laconia and placing and decorating and taking down the Christmas trees in Rotary Park and in the general downtown area. Uh, this is the second year that we've done that and, uh, that has worked out really well. Uh, we also had a new project, um, that we did this year with, um, Celebrate Laconia, and it was the Martin Luther King Tribute at the Colonia Theater. Uh, and that worked out really well for getting some of the clients, um, out in the community and to have a different view from some of the community members of, of where they are and, and, uh, and how addiction doesn't have to ruin you for life. Uh, so that was a, that was a really productive, uh, project, uh, for reintegration and on, on both parts. Uh, that's just an example of what we do. We do a food drive all the time. And, uh, it's something that, that we do and I think is valuable to the community. Um, our clients get a tremendous amount out of it. Many of them, even after they've completed the program, continue to volunteer uh, in various areas of the community and, and they enjoy that. So that, uh, it's, it's something that works out well for everyone involved. We have, I do have, uh, some different numbers for you on our caseload, uh, since a week and a half ago when I wrote this letter originally. Uh, I have an increase from 57 to 60, and that is made up of 16 juvenile cases, 16 adult misdemeanor cases, 27 felony cases, and one education only is what we currently stand at. Um, I just ran those numbers just about an, an hour ago before coming in. So that's where we stand as of right now. So we've increased three total in just the last week. I anticipate that that's, that's probably going to continue and, and level off at some point, but, um, but for the, you know, three of us, there's me and two case managers plus the intern. It's manageable and it's, and it's, it's, um, working well. So that's where we stand.
Uh, Michael, uh, thank you for that. Uh, explanation for the increase in, on the felony end?
Well, I think that, um, we're seeing cases that are come, so after COVID, we were getting cases that were sometimes a year, year and a half, two years old. Um, the cases that we're seeing now are only three or four months. The arrest was three or four months ago. So I think, uh, that COVID overload is kind of been disseminated and now we're dealing with this stuff. So we're getting a more accurate, uh, picture of, you know, you have the attorneys, the county attorney's offices. You know, again, this is my opinion. You'd probably have to ask the county attorney exactly what's going on, but I think it's given, the attorneys are, are having an opportunity to actually look at the cases and see, is this appropriate for diversion? As opposed to, we just need to clear dockets and, and put people in probation and, and move things along. The other thing that I think is a big part of it is that some of the defendants who come in are indigent and the previous court didn't waive the fee. It was kind of, you have to pay the fee. And so people would not elect a diversion program because they couldn't afford the $500 fee. The current court with Judge Leonard waives that fee. So I think that's a big part of why people are able to come into it because they don't have that financial factor where they're like, I've got all these other bills I have to pay. I've got another $500 payment. I can't afford it. So the fees are getting waived. So I think that's, people are accepting of a diversion agreement a little bit more because of that. But the clients who come in who are not indigent don't get those fees waived. So it's typically somebody that's filled out a financial affidavit and can't afford an attorney. So they get one provided for them and then they get their fees waived. So I think that's a big part of why we're seeing an increase.
So there is, uh, an economic component to this.
I think so.
Very interesting.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, you have some, if you can't, if you can't work because you're addicted, you're just driving, driving. All you're doing is chasing drugs and you're, and you're not working because of your addiction. An extra $500 can seem very overwhelming. To you and me, 500 bucks probably isn't a whole heck of a lot of money. But when you're not working and you, and you don't have a lot, any income, that can seem like Mount Everest to climb for you. So by eliminating that barrier, it gets them in. And, and when they do do that, I, I increase their community service hours. So it's, I don't give them a free ride. I make, and we may not get a cash benefit out of them, but I'm gonna have them out in the community providing services. So I try to make one hand wash the other.
Very good.
Michael, are there a lot of, how many diversion programs are in the county housing?
Um, we've got a couple of, uh, accredited juvenile, our program, Tilton has a, has a juvenile program. So there are two juvenile programs, but for adult diversion, it's just us. And then out of the 10 counties in New Hampshire, I believe there are only six county adult diversion programs.
Thank you.
The, the fees being waived, how, how is that gonna play towards your expert, your anticipated revenues for your department? Is that? Because it, I mean, it's great that the individuals can get the services. However, it sounds like your board is taking away revenue from the county that we, we budgeted and anticipated for.
Right. Well, my revenue and, um, projection has been decreased over the last year. Um, we do get revenue in from our juvenile program through the Esper. So that comes in because those programs are not, uh, program fee programs. Um, I would say maybe 30% would be the reduction. Uh, maybe one in three get their program fees waived. Very few misdemeanor programs receive. You can see my misdemeanor programs are way up, um, from where they were, uh, a year ago. Um, so those are $400 program fees. The felonies are five. So I'm seeing more. I think that's gonna offset and maybe one out of three adult felonies get their program fee waived. So it's, I, I think it'll probably reduce. If I had to guess with just, this is just a guess. It's not putting any accurate numbers together. I would say maybe by a third, 30%.
So what we budgeted for, we're only gonna get two thirds of that number?
No, what we, what, what I projected this year is what I anticipate with that reduction.
Okay.
Any additional questions, commissioners? Michael, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, commissioners, uh, we have some donations here. In the nursing home, we have a donation from Betty Percival in memory of John Richardson, the amount of $50 going towards the Resident Council Trust Fund. Uh, we have another donation from Robert and Stephanie Ewens in memory of John Richardson, the amount of $50 the Resident Council Trust Fund. And additionally, we have another generous donation from Charles R. Ruth Freiger in memory of Mr. Richardson, John Richardson, the amount of $100 the Resident Council Trust Fund. Is there a motion to accept these donations? Move all as presented.
Now, except that, um, John Richardson was, I was raised on Ridgewood Avenue in Gopher. John was our neighbor. And, uh, John was an insurance salesman and loved athletics. And there wasn't a student, a student athlete in Laconia High School, including myself, that didn't have their first policy, life insurance policy. Purged by John Richardson. And I, John is a great, great man, a good golfer, um, sang barbershop. And in the summertime, the windows would be open and they'd practice next to our house. And we'd sit there in our living room and listen to the barbershop singers. And it was, it was really a nice memory. So I'm, I'm really glad to accept this and I can see why, knowing John was.
Thank you for sharing that, Commissioner. It's good to know. We have a motion on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Thank you, commissioners and Commissioner Majors. Thank you, Chad. Uh, next, uh.
One more donation.
There is one, where is it? What am I overlooking here?
It's on Sheriff's stationery.
Oh, I'm sorry. I said, okay, so that. Oh, yeah. Uh, okay, so that was for the mountain bicycle program?
Yes. So ultimately, um, I received notice from, uh, Sergeant Trotter that, uh, he was approached by one of the heads of the, the New Hampshire American Federation of Labor and Congress of Industrial Organizations. So, um, basically one of the unions. And, uh, they had been following along with, uh, the donations of the bicycles that we had, uh, got this year. And, uh, they wanted to donate a rack so we can actually mount a rack on the back of a cruiser and be able to transport these bicycles around. And it's a two-place uh, rack and it's, uh, solid. So it's, uh, lockable and everything else. And so I come before you, uh, to accept the donation, uh, from the union for that.
I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
I'm gonna ask, um, Chief Deputy Jim McIntyre to join me up here. That's in reference to the review of the TOC grant. Uh, he has extensive knowledge on the grant. He's been part of the writers and managers and everything else of the grant. So.
I remember you went TOC.
Yeah, so that's the Tackle Operations Center. That's the big, uh, box truck.
Yep.
So as of right now, uh, the grant is still, uh, pending, or I should say ongoing. Uh, we have earmarked the money. Through the state, so it's there. It's, uh, it's just at this point, when we submitted the, uh, request for procurement from the state, they, uh, rejected it, saying that the scope of the work was different than the grant that it was initially applied for. So, uh, through some, uh, conversation with the state, uh, they determined that basically it was kind of a flop of, we had basically $135,000 worth of, uh, radio communication equipment uh, in the grant originally. We had $40, $45,000 or so of mechanical work to be done, uh, to the machine. After we went through the RFP program, uh, process and all that, it was identified that there was more mechanical work that needed to be done to the, uh, plant than, uh, communication needs, especially after we, um, started to build the new communication system itself, uh, with a different, uh, funding source. So, uh, when the, uh, grant information was, when the original grant information was put in, um, for the state to approve the funds, uh, in other words, to release the funds, uh, they, they found that anomaly and they just wanted a rewrite basically of why and how. Um, at that time, uh, the vendor that we had currently secured, uh, decided to withdraw and, uh, created this, uh, kind of stale process where, uh, again, Jim went ahead and, and, uh, continued filling out the paperwork and sent it to the state. But, uh, but our vendor that was originally selected dropped out.
That sheepdog and something?
Sheepdog and now.
Yep. Sheepdog and now.
So we only had two respondents to the, our fee. And, um, the people that originally gave quotes on the original application, uh, didn't, all of those people didn't, um, bid or respond to the RFP. So Sheepdog and then the other, um, the other, uh, vendor was a, um, company called Chef's. Chef's Unit, which they do box trucks, command vehicles and whatnot, but they're out of Texas. So, um, that gives you history. So we had two respondents. Um, the work I've been doing has been based on the second respondent, um, trying to salvage the, their RFP and also write an addendum, um, an amendment to this, to the scope, uh, in reference to the allocation amounts. So the scope, if you read the scope, it, the scope is the same. It's allocation of radio equipment versus, um, you know, stabilization, lighting and other features that would influence that vehicle's, uh, use if, uh, when it's deployed. So that's, that's what I've been working. It's, it's interesting, but it's kind of reinventing the whole process again. I've been working with the Grant Management Bureau, Bureau. They've seen a draft of the amended, um, request. They, they like the amended request. I'm just waiting for the formal numbers to come in so I can do the, um, authorized equipment list um, and resubmit this paperwork and, um, it should be good to go. So.
So there's, there's no expectation of change within the $181,000 that was, um, that was awarded to us by the state. The, the difference is, is changing the, uh, the numbers associated with the equipment and services that we're gonna be utilizing to bring that machine up to, up to spec. So they just needed us to justify why we needed, uh, you know, a, a less radio system and more.
Vehicle base.
Yeah. So, uh, and so we had to go through all the AEL numbers and get that all squared away and, and re-present it to them. Uh, the money's still there. It's still, it's there until 2025. So there's no change in that. Uh, there will be a change at some point, uh, when we come before you to say we need to change, um, who we select for, uh, the, the actual work to be done because the vendor that was originally selected and awarded, uh, they dropped out.
And that is Sheepdog and now again?
That is Sheepdog and now.
And what is our status with Sheepdog and now?
Why they dropped out?
So they didn't, um, they didn't want to wait for the Management Bureau to reevaluate and give the formal approval. So when they, they didn't like the idea of, um, it's not fitting in the scope. Um, I guess, you know, words matter. So not fitting in the scope, uh, you know, that's not, that wasn't the intent or this amendment. The, the allocation of awards is, is, uh, what's done. So they, they withdrew before the, this amendment was done. Um, they withdrew before any other word from the Management Bureau was done. Um, I don't know that they've done work with Grant Management Bureau before, but it, uh, it's the bureaucracy. It takes time. So.
Was there a contract with them?
So we, that's, we did have a contract with them.
So how did that contract get, in essence, null and void? How the contract get broken?
They withdrew from it. So they, I, it's, I don't understand how they feel it's null and void, but.
Send money to them?
We did send money to them.
Has it all been returned?
It has not all been returned.
What's the holdup of, of being returned?
Uh, they feel that there was work done in the bidding process and they feel that, um, they had, or they indicate through a letter to, um, I believe it was to Deb Shackett, that they have ordered materials that couldn't be returned and that they're out of money. So they arbitrarily sent a, a letter back with an amount that they felt was, um, justified. I believe it was $10,000 and maybe $10.06. And that was what they were gonna return out of $36,000 or $35,000. So they arbitrarily have changed the withdrawn from the contract, sent their conditions back and waited for a response from the county. Um, in our meetings, our response was that's, that's a unilabial decision. That's not, those aren't the conditions of the contract. Contract doesn't say that any of this is non-refundable. Um, contract doesn't say any of that. And they withdrew. They would still be in the running today if they were on hold and, uh, but it has created a hole for us. We're trying to figure out through council and whatnot. And I think, I haven't seen any correspondence with recommendations of council. But that may and may not be a discussion.
What was the original contract? What was the original contract for with them?
I think the original contract in total, the whole project was, um, it was 160 was the project, but there were other entities, um, Two Way Communication and Motorola were part of that from out of tubes.
But they were buying the, they were buying the radio equipment?
They weren't buying radio equipment. They were buying, um, mast.
I think, I think the sheriff said that there was 135 radio equipment, which means there was 50,000 for equipment. So how would we sign a contract with them for 150? That what you said? What was the contract for?
161?
161, yeah.
That math does not add up to me. So how, how did we? How did we get money in contract right out of the gate? Doesn't sound like it aligned with.
So the contract aligned with the work and product and allowance for the radios that we configured the project. So starting the project, again, the, the, the grant was written with the idea of $130,000 allocated to radio equipment.
Right.
And in the meantime, when that was written.
50,000 for bodywork and that's what the grant.
That's what the Grant Management Bureau.
Repairs approved, here's your grant.
Correct.
Right? And then we signed a contract for $160,000 for repairs to a truck that's certain of a unit.
It wasn't just repairs to the truck. It was, it was other stabilization. It was, no, it wasn't radio equipment. It was electronic equipment, which I believe fit in the scope of the project and I still do. And, and their indication is it fits in the scope. It's just explaining to them through the addendum why less is needed for radios and more is needed for stabilization system, the lighting system, electronic monitors, um, and, and other, uh, other identified equipment. Um, inverter equipment, um, surveillance cameras and so forth. So the new AEL list has broken that down.
Yeah.
So it's, that, that's the difference. So in essence, I mean, hastily reading this, about $78,000 would have to go to the vehicle. The command post planned and then oning, scening, um, lighting, $6,000, uh, command, I'm sorry, um, surveillance cameras, uh, about $9,000 and so forth. What the inverter system was $7,000. So reallocating the funds stays within the scope, but less is going to the radio. We didn't need the radio equipment that was originally specced for. When I got here, I, I reconsulted the, the commanders there to see what they needed. We attempted out, they actually had a big, uh, part of the input when I came here last February in getting a better, um, outline of the project in which direction it needs to go. And that's how we came up with less. And that's how we came up with less radios needed, more um, you know, more of these other items needed. So I put that together, we put it to RFP and that came back. When I sent it back to the state, that's when they just flagged, well, the radio was a higher value when you first applied. It's less now, can you explain? So that's, that's what we have. That explanation is, is, is fine. Um but again, second tier is, we had, when I explained this to the vendor, to hold off, not start the project and not spend money. I need to finish this work with the grant. They withdrew from the project and.
Okay.
So that's, that was.
I mean, is, is there a withdrawal clause in the contract for them to back out?
There's no withdrawal clause for them to back out.
I wonder what meaning they have drawn. Have you looked at or is?
Yes, um Paul Fitzgerald's looking at it now or working with Sheepdog's attorney. I'm trying to get the twenty-five thousand back.
Twenty-six thousand.
Twenty-six thousand.
And has Sheepdog provided an inventory of the products that they say they cannot return for credit?
Um Attorney Fitzgerald told me today that he has received all information that he's going to get from them. And he is working on a letter that he will send to you in the next couple days.
Okay, and as I think Sheriff and the Deputy Sheriff mentioned. There's no language in the contract with Sheepdog and Haligan indicating that the thirty-six thousand remitted by the county. Uh was non-refundable?
No.
There's none in the language. So potentially, they could be in breach, but I think the Board of Commissioners, their number one priority here is to recover. Those lost monies, that twenty-six thousand. What's the best way to do it? Okay.
I believe, I believe this is a criminal matter, in that it should be referred to the town uh in which, where this business is located. So even going uh, you know, beyond the, the civil aspect of this, um we don't, we don't have goods and services, uh. We don't have anything that's associated. We, we, they, in essence, took the money and ran with it. Um we have nothing to per, to show any, any work or anything, bad business. Um it's criminal, so.
When you delivered the, the vehicle down to them, did you tell them not to spend any money?
Correct, yes.
How did they get thirty-five thousand then?
So the thirty-five thousand was asked to be earmarked through the, through the um.
Jim, is it thirty-five or thirty-six? I just want to be precise with the numbers.
Thirty-six thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents.
And to date, they returned ten thousand? Deborah?
Ten thou- uh it's about ten thousand six hundred.
So the balance owed the county is twenty-six, and when did we receive that initial refund? Ten thousand, ten-six?
December, early December.
So it's been dragging now for close to seven weeks.
I, I like enough, how come they spent that money? If you told them, and where did it come from, the grant, you know, if you told them not to spend any money, why did we give them thirty-six thousand?
So what we can say is.
I thought it was part of the contract, that per sign the contract, that included sign the contract and.
The deposit.
So that was. They would get twenty-five cents.
Twenty-five percent.
Tell them, don't spend any.
Correct.
I- is there any scenario? If they were willing, that they would still be a vendor of choice to do the work? And hold them to the contract to do the work? If, if the grant is approved, with this reallocation.
If, if the work seems in the grant, if the work that they can perform in the scope of the grant could be done by them.
Right.
Yes, it would, I, they could still do the work. I mean, that, there's a couple of questions that perhaps council might be, I don't know what strategy. Council would have, so I don't know if that's a public session discussion you want to have or not, but to answer your question, yes, I think that. If, if they couldn't return the money, then they could perform services to the value of thirty-five thousand dollars.
Or hold them to the contract that we signed.
What's that?
Or, or hold them to the contract that, that we signed and we held up our end, we, we want you to hold up your end and we're not gonna. There, there isn't a withdrawal clause, if you.
Right.
Do the work.
The contract that's been signed, we're not going to get reimbursed from the state for the, for this, that work.
So, as he's continuing to put in the paperwork to get the approvals, so we're still moving forward with the uh process. We've already um, you know, secured that money for the state, we just need to uh, we redid the paperwork to support what work it is that we needed done versus. What the original grant uh.
If they approve that allocation, that lines up with the contract every time we have, that's better.
Yes.
Yes.
Then, then we would get a, that twenty-five thousand out of the grant.
And I suggest if they did the work or whatever, uh you know. Yeah, so they sent us the product or whatever it is that, that they need, it doesn't stop the project, we, we still have.
Right.
The model of the project that we're trying to follow here.
And I would think if nobody else bid on this, and they're the only ones that did, wouldn't it be move us to try to?
There were two people that bid on it.
Yeah, but you said out of Texas, so that's a moot point.
Well, it's not a moot point, it's a thing of shipping, which is also included in the AEL, so I mean, in my figure, my calculation. My calculations aren't to do business with, with people that would do business the way they're doing. So I would caution to pave that path. I mean, I, I would say.
Just asking the question, I understand.
Yeah, so we never fired them, we never, like, we're still trying to get um everything to line up, that we, we need this work done and this is what we're asking for.
Right.
Uh so it all lines up. It's almost like they just didn't want to wait for the paperwork to be submitted, to be re-approved. And them to say, okay, like, that's, that's ultimately what this boiled down to. So I don't understand how it got to this point. Uh where they just decided, yeah, never mind, we don't want to wait. It, it was, it's still fit within the timeframes and the parameters in which they had set forward to say, it would take three months for this to be completed. It was still, was still in that timeframe right now.
Do we have to give a laugh?
Oh yeah, of course, yeah. They did no work to it, it sat down, it just basically, we delivered it.
Lockdown and their parking lot and waited for the, the final approvals from the, from the grant management. So.
So Deborah, a couple of things. If, if Sheepdog and Haligan are hanging their hats on the fact that we had to buy product that we can't return for credit. And if they're stymying legal to return the balance of twenty-six thousand and change that they owe back to the county. At the very minimum, we're entitled to receive that product and to have it here on campus for possible resale, repurposing should the grant, the grant be accepted. So at the very least, they're obligated to show us and deliver to us the parts they ordered. That they're claiming cost them twenty-six thousand dollars. Does that make sense?
Yes, that's exactly what our legal counsel has requested from them.
Okay, all right. It sounds commissioners, at this point, that we have to go into a wait and see mode. And see what we can recover. Hopefully, we can recover all of it. Um based on the tone of this conversation, I do have to question the ethics of this particular company. And why they haven't been forthcoming in a variety, in a variety of areas.
Another, another thing that I, I caution the, the commission on is, as soon as you cash that, that ten thousand dollar check that was sent. Uh you now entered into a, a civil contract with them as to whatever their terms and conditions are. I believe that uh not catching that, not accepting it, and saying that um you given a check as a town payment, um. You know, don't earmark everything that, that we needed to do as within a contract. They withdrew, uh they refused to give us uh the money back. As, as requested in full, uh it's criminal, this is a criminal matter.
Deborah, you deposited the check, correct?
No.
You have not deposited. Is Paul advising we deposit the check or sit on it?
He, he, I, he haven't, I haven't.
Okay, so we'll find out from him if we should keep the ten thousand on cash for now, for legal reasons. Okay. Commissioner Waring?
Agreed. I guess the waiting game right at this point.
Now, I was a little concerned about how this process worked, um you know, and, and how the check got, that um. Written out and everything else, which is here or there. One of my big concerns was that grants management, that we, we play this um. This back and forth thing with grants management as to, uh you know, we apply for a grant, we, we normally submit uh quotes and things. On such short notice, and then uh, you know, then we wait to see if they're going to agree to, you know, paying what it is and all that. Uh so I, I asked the chief to uh, to do some follow-up with that. And uh what we found was uh that these type of situations are, are actually not uncommon for, for grants. Uh unfortunately, this is the first time in nineteen years that I've been dealing with grants, that uh, that this is, this has come up. Um so it's, it's very um disarming that a local business would uh go down this road, especially because they didn't want to wait. Like, we haven't changed any of their work, like, we didn't change any of the request of work or products or anything. If, if we came in and changed, you know, what we wanted done or how we wanted it done, uh I could see them being upset and, and posturing with us. That was not the case in this. It was more like, though grants want us to re-justify why we want this product instead of this product. And uh, and that was easily done. Uh the chief easily sat down and, and located everything that he needed and uh. Has it all ready to submit back to grants, which they've already been in, in coordination with each other, so uh it's more like just getting it formalized on the uh paper. Um so I, I don't understand why they took the stance. Um but I can most certainly say that um, again, I think that this is a criminal, it's a criminal matter. And uh we should be pursuing this as a criminal matter. And uh, and if it ends up being uh not found to be criminal. Uh determined by that prosecutorial authority, then uh, then we can go after them civilly, but um. Uh we, we don't have any more, we don't have any products, we don't have any work done to our machine, uh they, they have nothing that I have seen. Um I've been uh in zero contact with any legal advice on this, so uh what I can say is that I, I believe this is criminal matter. We, we should be pursuing this.
Deborah, the commissioners do not know how, when this is going to be resolved, but in any case. Uh can you please keep a running tally on what our legal costs incurred will be between now and when it's settled, one way or the other? Thank you. Commissioners? Okay, like Commissioner Hodge says, we wait and see.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, Commissioners, uh next up, we have Lori Sharp with the National Update. Lori, you're smiling, so you bring us good news now.
She's picking on me because I'm out here to try to see the papers. Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. So you should first, we should have your revenue report, and these were updated last week. Uh revenue for the projection of uh the year-end, we're projecting an excess revenue of seven hundred and eight thousand eight. Hundred and nine dollars. Um and there's uh with, with both of these, I should actually say, maybe I do a little bit here, I can switch it down, but. There's not too much that has changed compared to what was then this one. Um which I think is probably. Um on the expense side, we're projecting an operational savings. Of, also plus of a million two eighty-six eighty-eight. Nine hundred and fifty-six thousand of that is coming from the general fund and two hundred and seventy thousand of that is coming from the nursing home. Again, that also, before that report was updated um last week. Um and just as a side note, uh you know, there's, I checked with AP today. We're, we're really getting down here, there's not really much of anything left coming through for one of three, they should be all done with that. For the most part anyhow, so these are getting pretty tight as far as numbers and things are. Um flipping over to the fund balance, taking those two pieces of information into consideration. Um I updated the fund balance report. And so with those two pieces, the excess revenue of seven oh eight, the operational savings of a million, almost three, a million two eighty-six. Then we're projecting an end fund balance of five million four sixty-four nine oh seven. Um and that slightly changed from the last estimate that we gave you. Um and that number is, of course, as it states there, that's an un-audited number. Um the next piece of information I have on here for you is, I, I provided the two thousand and twenty-three cash flow, really for informational purposes. Just so you can see where the year is ending. And then the two thousand and twenty-four, I, I provided you also, just so you could see. That where that number comes into the two thousand and twenty-four beginning. And then when we'll need to predict that we'll need to borrow. So we're projecting that that will need to take place. Around the beginning of, or, or for the beginning of April. Um and then in reference to borrowing, the treasurer had presented uh to the commissioners on November thirteenth. And it was a fee to borrow of fifty-four million dollars. Um so now, we do just need to schedule a meeting on the executive committee. For their approval to do that borrowing.
I guess I thought that was, uh wanted to be scheduled and surprised that it hasn't been yet. If we need the money by early April.
It takes about a month.
So that'll have to be scheduled before the end of February.
Yeah, it should be ASAP.
Is it the same group for the budget?
Different group, but I think they can.
That would be Chairman Overt.
Couple of them sit out and convene as the executive committee.
Okay.
Probably do that.
So that would be Representative Overt, who needs to be contacted on this, or Chairman Bean?
Actually Chairman Bean.
Chairman Bean, okay.
The chairman of the executive committee.
Okay.
Which he will need to get a lot of.
Now I can start the process with providing um the bond council with the information that they need. Actually, so that can, she can start working on those numbers.
Okay. So uh the present fund balance is uh thirty-seven fourteen nine oh seven?
No, no, we're projecting the end of twenty-three to be five million four sixty-four, so the three million seven fourteen. That's taking into consideration what we expect to bring into twenty-four and what we're using for fund balance and twenty-four budget. I mean, that doesn't of course include the excess revenue or the operational savings yet.
So the bottom figure is your best es- your best estimate?
The five million four sixty-four is what we're projecting for the end of two thousand and one and three.
I'm just looking ahead to the end of this year.
Oh, okay, then yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
We have a request for a new RFP funding contract. Hello there. What do you have for us? You have a letter? I believe we do.
Yes, they do.
So I'm making a request this evening. Your authorization to add an RFP project to the RFP project list. Which would be to replace the building control system in the nursing home with a new system. System that's currently in there was installed in November two thousand sixteen and. We've had multiple service calls over the time that I've been here and. Even speaking with Deborah, it's been a problem since she's been here as well. Um. This system is, you know, it's, it's a computer-based system that operates all of the nursing home systems, including boilers. How they modulate, um dampers, sensors, actuators, all the controllers in the field. Operates all the BAV boxes um in the nursing home, and recently we've had some problems. Just trying to maintain a basic, consistent environment over there. Over the past, well, basically throughout the winter, we had temperature fluctuations of anywhere from sixty to eighty-six degrees in the nursing home. Um the system that's there now is outdated, no longer serviceable in parts. Have become increasingly difficult to source and they are very, very, very costly. I remember not so long ago, we had to replace an actuator, we searched everywhere for it and. We literally found like one in New England that was used and um. got it up here just to try to keep things running as best as we can.
John, let me interrupt you for a moment. So you're stating that it is outdated, antiquated, obsolete, underperforming. I don't dispute that. But it's only eight years old?
The actual software, the operating system is eight years old, but the equipment out in the field that the software talks to is much older than that.
How much older?
I don't know. I don't wanna give you bad information.
Deborah, any recollection?
I don't know when that's.
I mean, I would have to imagine it was. When was the last nursing home, um, upgrade or addition was in?
Was it two thousand?
No, two thousand and eight.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think it's dating literally back to the late eighties and nineties.
It's that old?
Yeah, yeah. I just haven't been able to personally find anything.
Okay.
Any documentation on it?
And do we know what we expended in November sixteen as far as software, uh, computer programmable?
Well, I know she made, just recently, over the past couple of weeks, I believe she made three, three service calls to try to get the area, the, like, the dining room and then the wing where the, um, Shelley, Miley and Amanda.
Who was the company that responds?
Well, we've had multiple companies respond, so sometimes it's difficult to, sometimes it's difficult to find out if it's a mechanical problem.
Yeah.
Or if it's a software-related problem.
Is there a go-to company that you're working with?
So we've been using Wicked Pool Mechanical, like, Martin Johnson and, um, E and E of New Hampshire.
And who's doing the best with this system?
They're all been doing well, trying to fix their respective areas. I know Shelley, I think in the past couple of weeks, has had four service calls.
What are those service calls running us?
Four hundred and eighty dollars a service call.
So a couple of grand in just service calls.
And then we had another one recently where they put another part in, I believe it was seventeen hundred dollars.
So you're up to almost four thousand service calls, parts, repairs in just the last month?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I don't see a number here for this proposal.
Um, so I don't have a number to put in there. I was hoping to have it today.
Is there, is there a cost estimate you can give us?
Um, hold on to something. Probably gonna be somewhere between two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
For the software and then building controls. Um, if you add the V A V boxes into that, it's probably about another hundred and twenty-two thousand. This is whether or not.
So we're looking at four hundred thousand in upgrades?
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. We have a hundred and eight thousand budgeted already for the V A V boxes.
Okay, and Shelley's budget.
Right, and we spent seventy-five thousand to put a new control system in the courthouse. We, the number that I had from the C I P request is two hundred thousand for a control system.
Right.
I don't know if you think that is.
I just wanted to make sure that I guessed and estimated on the safe side.
So if you bring us a number, say at the next meeting, and hypothetically, the board agrees to fund that one way or the other, probably by reallocating ARPA funds for either the courthouse or the solar array or both. Would this phase out all of the antiquated equipment that you have in that building from the eighties and the nineties?
A hundred percent.
Is this a frame-off restoration?
Pretty much.
A fresh start, okay.
Yeah.
Commissioner Waring?
And what I can do to give you a, a real, real number is I can put the R and P out. And it would be, you know, contingent on
Well, what, what we need tonight is commissioner's permission to add this project to the ARPA list. And then, assuming you are willing to do that, then we will need to convene a delegation meeting. Because we have to get their permission to add projects to the list. And then, um, in the meantime, uh, John can be working on an R and P and we can be finalizing the cost. We know this is a priority project and so.
Well, based on those service calls and repair bills, it has to be. And if the temperature control is that erratic, that means there's a tremendous loss in, in, in energy efficiency in that building. If you're going from sixty degrees to eighty-six degrees. Not to mention the discomfort of the employees and the residents. It's either cold or it's hot, which you're telling us anyway. Commissioner Hodges?
Yeah, and I think it's, it's justified because, I'll tell you right now, it was probably early nineties when that was done because subsequently, when the sheriff's office moved up to the wing up here, because that got vacated. Um, by, by residents because they went into the new nursing home. Yeah, and we moved out here in about ninety-four, ninety-five.
That's where I was thinking the date was.
So that's probably goes to about ninety-three, ninety-four. Yeah.
And I just wasn't able to find anything.
Thirty years, it's a long time. Commissioner Waring?
I don't have a problem putting the project on the list. I just wanna make sure we're not shorting any other projects.
We will be, the only way we can do it, we will be have, we will have to short another project. Either the solar project or the courthouse basement.
But we have the no money down option on the solar project.
Right.
Which would save us.
You could save seven hundred and fifty thousand, you, or any amount up to that. So the solar can be done for no money down or seven hundred and fifty thousand or anywhere in between.
Or Commissioner Waring would put a hold on the courthouse project or a component of that.
Do we, we, do we have that estimate back yet?
No, we don't have final prices, um, on the courthouse project. And we've been talking a lot and are continuing to talk with vendors about the solar project. And electricity rates continue to come down. You know, we need to make sure it's worth spending this capital money that we have right now on that project.
And where are we at with that contract?
They, we haven't seen the contract. We have a meeting scheduled. We have a push for the contract. We haven't been in any, um, any pressure or reason to get it, get us under contract, which turns out is probably a good thing.
Get this project moving.
Well, they assure us it's not holding it up. They're doing what their piece, uh, working with Eversource on, what's that called? Interconnection?
Yes.
Something rather. Um, so they've assured us it's not affecting the timeline any. And as soon as they have the contract ready for us, you know, once we get the contract, then we need to decide on a dollar amount. So it seems, you know, my recommendation right now would be to take the money out of that solar project to get this, um, heating and cooling system corrected while we have the money. And we can do the solar, we can still do the solar. It will mean that we'll have, we'll pay, we'll have a little less in savings. With, with our decreasing contribution, we will have less and less in savings. If we decided not to do solar at all now, we could do it at any time with no money down. If that were desirable.
That would require a major revision to the contract we're awaiting from the solar company.
Then we would just not have a contract, right? We would not enter the contract.
We haven't entered into anything yet.
For two hundred thousand dollars, we have a surplus, a fund balance that is higher than anticipated. We asked to increase the fund balance by two hundred thousand and pay the two hundred thousand out of the operating budget in twenty twenty-four. Did not even touch our, our projects that we've been working on for three years and said this is the path we're going, so.
Will two hundred thousand?
Been to squash the solar project or change it, but how we've agreed to it to this point.
Will two hundred thousand cover it?
That's what is, is being said, put on the sheet.
Because if it will, that sounds like a good pathway to solve both.
I mean, to me, that's, I mean, that's, uh, it's an alternative pathway that, you know, we have final numbers. I don't think we can really make a determination by one way or the other.
And then that also means waiting until the budget is approved to find out if the delegation's going to.
Well, either way, we're gonna have to, apparently, we're gonna have to convene the delegation to get them to approve, put this on the list. That I don't necessarily agree that we have to do that either, but there's no, there is no path to move this forward immediately. So is there an immediate need?
Yes.
And how, how quickly would the work be done? You're gonna put an R and P process.
Yeah, I mean.
That's two weeks for an R and P to come back.
I mean, I have it written because it's basically been the same template that I used to the courthouse.
Right.
It's the same system, um, put it out for, I think you said a couple of weeks. Have an opening, hit one of the meetings and.
How many bids do you think you're gonna get?
Last time I got two.
And the urgency is because of the heating season?
Just the comfort for the staff and residents.
I mean, last Friday.
Maybe six weeks out before we even come close to being ready to.
Yeah, I mean, last Friday.
Gonna do that.
Eighty-something degrees over there and then the windows open.
That every day.
And we want the work to be done in the spring, right?
Yes.
That's the goal. I know that.
Yeah, Steve is just not. Not Steve there.
It's pretty erratic.
We could go through the whole R and P process and as long as we don't award the work until we know we have the funding, one way or another. We could be ready because the ideal to have them lined up to work in spring.
So if you can get us the numbers sooner rather than later, we'll go from there. But I think, uh, Commissioner Waring's proposal may work, depending on how big that number is.
So when I do the R and P, this clarity for myself, so I know what I'm doing. Would be the control system and everything in the field. What about the V A V boxes?
Uh, that's already in the budget, right?
So, so far, but I mean, they should be done at the same time.
Well, I understand that, yeah.
Well, and I think we even talked about with the budget, um, if you only had one chunk of money, you would do the control system, not the V A V boxes, if you had to pick one.
Yes.
So I think we have to hope that the budget passes with both projects in it. And if only one of them comes through the budget, then we are only gonna do one and we'll keep paying repair bills.
I mean, I can ask for the R and P to come back, the price, the software and the controls package in the V A V boxes. So that they're together in the same R and P, but we can, we can choose the one, essentially.
That was agreeable. So is it the consensus of the board to leave the solar array project as proposed with the down payment that we've agreed on?
I mean, I agree with you. At, at this point, I don't see a need to change it at this point.
I, I agree with you. I think Commissioner Waring's solution to this seems to me to be a good solution. And keep the solar project where it is.
Okay, so Commissioner Waring, you think that we can free up two hundred thousand without tapping into the other R projects?
It would still be in, in compliance with our fund balance policy if we, if we increased our recommendation at two million dollars. Our fund balance policy says that we will recommend what the prior year surplus was. By surplus than that was two million bucks.
And Deborah, there's still some here because we don't have the hard numbers from the courthouse and we're waiting for John to, uh, John, I'm hoping you can get three bids rather than two. That puts us in a stronger position, but, you know, we'll, we'll see what happens. Let us, let us know.
Do you want to refresh the commissioners on the rates, just so you have those?
Sure.
So if the county would, right now, we pay twelve point one in the units per kilowatt hour.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Twelve point one seven eight per kilowatt hour.
Okay.
If the county were to put seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars down, it would be five point six cents a kilowatt hour. A half a million dollars is six point two cents kilowatt hour. Two hundred and fifty thousand is six point nine cents per kilowatt hour. And no money down is seven point four cents per kilowatt hour. Um, in addition to that, there's a one point five percent escalator with ever, which, whatever rate you choose. And the county would get a ten thousand dollar per year land lease for twenty-five years, for total of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So Commissioner Waring, the seven fifty thousand gives us a pretty deep discount.
Yeah, and so it was of course, it's twenty-five years. That rate's locked in for twenty-five years. So, I mean, I, I get that the incremental dollar upfront seems very small change in, in cost per kilowatt hour, but well, by that, I mean, all the kilowatt hours, I mean, it's twenty-five years.
I mean, that saves us sixty percent on the kilowatt rate per year.
Significant amount of money with our.
All right, well, well, Jeff, I think we should leave that in place.
It's about two million kilowatt hours a year is what we use.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And just keep in mind that one point five percent. But and what I think what Deborah was alluding to earlier is that at some point with the rates coming down, whatever rate you choose, that escalator at some point will match.
Right, of course.
And they won't really, I didn't bother to do that just to see, even if we paid the highest, if we put no money down and we have an electric rate starting at seven point four cents. Yeah, after twenty-five years of one and a half percent escalations, it would get up to ten cents. So we're not likely gonna touch that, but I went through it after you got that opinion. So it seems unlikely we'll still, it seems likely we will continue saving money for those twenty-five years. Unless something dramatic happens with our electricity market.
And, and even at some point, if, if it leveled out towards the end, we still have twenty-five years of a more environmentally friendly way of producing electricity.
And you're using the five acres? All right, let's, let's hope we get a reasonable, reasonable numbers. And let Deborah know as soon as you start hearing back and hopefully we'll have something, uh, for the next meeting. On the twelfth?
Yeah.
Okay.
And at the next, um, budget review committee meeting is where you will, you need to ask them to add money and increase the A V recommended amount of fund balance. So, so that you get to make sure that happens.
That's Wednesday, right?
Yes.
That would be this Wednesday?
Yes.
Wednesday. You'll make a note of that, more? Thank you. All right, commissioners, anything else?
How are we going with the reviews?
I think they've been productive. Uh, I think they've been open. I think there's been reasonableness on the side of the budget review committee. Um, I think they will hold sway when they go before the full delegation with their recommendations. And I, I think they're being very, very realistic, Commissioner Waring, on the numbers.
I agree.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yep, I agree with that.
What's up? Good.
Thank you, John.
John, thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Okay, commissioners, uh, Deborah, public comment? No.
Oh, I don't have a public.
I see none.
You don't have any public comments?
No.
Anybody else? Oh, we're not. Anyone else like to speak? Angela? Probably not, okay. Uh, all right then, I guess, Deborah, we can adjourn to go into a non-public session or?
You can go, you would go into a non-public session.
And you will call the role for that?
Yes. Uh, Commissioner Waring?
Yes.
Commissioner Spanos?
Yes.
Commissioner Vajas?
Yes.
You are officially in.
I'm public, okay, thank you, Deborah.